Before we officially start, I would just like to remind everyone to please silence your cell phones. And I would like to officially welcome, Becky, are we up and running? Okay, very good, we're broadcasting. Welcome, everybody, to our very first city council meeting of 2025. What a great way to start the year, huh? Okay. Anyways, thank you to everybody that has come here in person. It's great to see a wonderful crowd and to everybody that is watching us online. As we start, I'd like to go ahead and introduce everybody that's sitting up here. On my far right, we have our city attorney, Mac McKellar. Next to Mac, we have councilman Lauren Wise. Next to Lauren, we have councilwoman Pamela Holder. Next to Pamela, we have councilman Mac Morrow. I'm Mayor Maureen Koploff. On my immediate left, we have our city clerk Denise Hodston. Next to Denise, we have Mayor Protem and Councilman Gary Daniel. Next to Gary, we have Councilman Erin Baker. And on the far left, we have our city manager, Wilson Hooper. And with that, I'm very pleased today to welcome Reverend Bob Rangelian from the United, oh, the Unitarian Universalist of Transylvania County. Make sure I get that right, Reverend Bob. And he is going to give our invocation. Thank you, Reverend.
Thank you, Mayor. Each in our own ways, let us gather into this time of prayer and invocation. Spirit of love and life, we ask for wisdom and support through the decisions before us and to remember the wide-ranging diversity of this community as we strive to love our neighbors and love you. Help us be centered in this moment to engage in meaningful discussion. May we respect differences, resist divisiveness, and may our good work nurture the bonds of community. We pray for the leaders here represented, for their health and for their strength through the storms of circumstance which may be arising in their lives. We give thanks to those who serve their neighbors for their own and their loved ones' sacrifices so that their dedication to the wider good might be a blessing. We give thanks in the names of all the helpers of humankind, known and unknown, remembered and forgotten, and we pray each in our own ways and say, amen, blessed be.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Bob. Would you tell us a little bit about the UUTC?
Yeah, the Unitarian Universalist of Transylvania County is located down on South Broad Street, downhill from the library, across the street from the Cardinal Diner, and the parking lot's right behind it on Varsity Street. We've got just under 200 people from the city and the county on our rolls, and some even travel a little bit further to come and get to us, or they watch us on YouTube if they are traveling or homebound. Our mission is to support individual spiritual journeys and to promote social, economic, and environmental justice. And we open our buildings to meditation groups, and we sponsor a grief group and a caregiver support group, and work with Transylvania County Strong, TC Strong, to reach out to ask at-risk or marginalized youth. We partner with the Rainbow Alliance and other organizations. We support ecumenical services in the community such as Sharing House and Bread of Life and The Haven, and annual events such as the Power Up Dinner jointly with St. Philip's Episcopal and the Jewish Community. And we've been a host location for community events, including the most recent Interfaith Service of Thanks in November and the Brevard Jewish Community Lecture in September. And we offer youth programming as well, regardless of religious background. And we're glad to be a part of the Brevard and Transylvania County community for now 25 years.
And we are so glad that you are a part of this community and you do so much. And I have to say that that Interfaith service in November was really, really special.
I'm so glad.
Thank you for organizing that for our community. Thank you, Reverend Bob. If everyone would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, honor, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Madam Mayor, you have a quorum. All members are present.
Okay. Counsel, you got the draft agenda sent out. Are there any proposed changes to the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve?
No move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Counsel, you got the minutes, the draft minutes of the December 2nd, 2024 regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. We will now have public comment. Thank you. All right. The public is invited to speak during public comment at this time on any topic unless it is a public hearing item on the agenda. We do have one public hearing on the amendment to the fee schedule tonight. Anyone who wants to speak must register with the city clerk, which is what the sign-up sheet is. When it is your turn, step to the podium in front of city council. State your name and address clearly. Limit comments to three minutes or less and avoid repetition. I will give you a warning when you have 30 seconds left. Direct comments to the full council, not to an individual council member or to staff, and groups are encouraged to appoint a spokesperson on their behalf. And our first speaker tonight is Dr. Paula Hartmanstein.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Dr. Paula Hartmanstein, Age Friendly Task Force Coordinator in Brevard. I live at 249 Pine Mountain Trail in Strauss Park. Tonight, I want to summarize what we did on behalf of Age Friendly in 2024. We are living through a longevity revolution, yet our culture is relentlessly negative about aging. Even though our surveys showed that most people in Brevard don't feel that they have experienced ageism, I can tell you firsthand that students that I taught at Brevard College have deeply held ageist beliefs. On the first day of class, they wrote anonymously what comes to mind when they hear the term "old person." Well, comments were "senile," "grumpy," and my favorite, nearing expiration date. So, I had one-on-one meetings and discussions with older adults, and two of you actually participated in that. And four months later, 70% of the responses were positive. Now, was this an anomaly? Well, I asked my colleague at Blue Ridge Community College, Karen Cochran, how many of her 40 nursing students say they want to work with older adults? Answer: one. I said, "Why?" She said, "Because they only see older adults who are in palliative care, half-dead, or are not independent." So, she wanted to have a place where they could meet with people who are functional and independent. So, could age-friendly programs make a difference? Well, I think they do and have. Our program, Year One, focused on the domains of respect, communication, and information, and community health. Now, when you have a new idea, you always have some naysayers and skeptics, do you not? Well, this is what I'd like to say to those. One of them was, "It'll be all talk. You're not going to do anything. It'll take years to accomplish anything." Well, in Year One, we offered 17 different sessions, including eight lifelong learning programs and nine support groups, totaling 410 contacts. 21% of those contacts were young people, as young as age 11. We had two pre-teensers. Here's another one. "It's not what the people want." Well, our survey showed 67% of the survey respondents do want lifelong learning, and 58% said they wanted the intergenerational program.
30 seconds.
Okay. "It won't help our economy." That's harder to measure, but I can tell you, six of the programs were held at the time where people could go and have lunch and shop in Brevard. So, we have more to do, and with your support of our action plan, we'll accomplish a lot more for all ages, all stages of life. And I'd like to say one last comment. If I have a say in the programs, just maybe we'll reduce the ageism present in our young adults who receive their education here. And I've given Mr. Hooper a very detailed thing that I've...
Thank you, Dr. Hartmanstein. Our next speaker is Rebecca Chaplin.
Good evening, council members. Rebecca Chaplin, AARP Associate State Director, 117 Stony Fork Road in Barnardsville, North Carolina. As your AARP Staff Delicate, I am joined today by committed volunteers and community members to ask for your endorsement of the adoption of the Brevard Age Friendly Action Plan, because it's really good. I've seen a lot of action plans, and this one really summarizes the needs that were expressed in the survey really well and with a lot of creativity. You may know, or you may not be familiar, with the eight domains of an age-friendly community, and I think it's a good time to just remind folks of what those are. They are social participation, civic engagement, like we're doing right now, respect and inclusion, outdoor spaces, transportation, housing, community and health services, and communication and information. I think we can all accept that enhancements and improvements in all of those areas will improve the quality of life for all ages. It'll improve my quality of life as a 45-year-old mother of a six-year-old. It'll improve my in-law's life. It'll include people of all ability levels. So, an age-friendly community is truly a community for all ages. Now, this action plan chooses to focus on five of those domains: affordable housing, transportation, community and health services, communication and information, and outdoor spaces. So, each of these domains bring in a benefit to social inclusion, economic benefits, benefits to tourism, but really benefit the people who already live in Brevard. What I mostly want to do is congratulate this diverse task force that has worked hard in a short amount of time to create the succinct plan. I see that it builds on your master plan, it builds on your pedestrian plan and affordable housing plans, and it paves the way for the future. Now, you've already joined the network, and there's benefits to that, like becoming a network with other communities nationwide who are like-minded. But now that you have this focused action plan, it can increase grant funding opportunities, as I've seen in other communities, and it can also really focus efforts and improve community collaboration. So, I'm here to endorse the plan and let you know it's a really good one relatively, and thank those members of the task force that put this together, some of which some of you are on and members are here, and thank you in anticipation of your approval of the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sarah Knapp.
Hi, I'm Sarah Knapp at 78 Bruce Circle, Pisgah Forest. I call Brevard my home. And so, it's been my pleasure to actually have been part of the Brevard Age Friendly Task Force and to witness the evolution of the Age Friendly Brevard Action Plan. This plan has evolved through efforts to gather input from adults age 50 and above about Brevard livability and to formulate the results into action initiatives. It, I've been happy to be a part of that task force, to play a role in particular in the data analysis for the survey results. And more significantly, the plan has been the result of no small effort on the part of Mayor Koploff, on the part of task leader, Dr. Hartmanstein, and as well as the other task members in terms of pulling the action plan together, finding a way to actually help to see a path forward in terms of the age-friendly initiative. What impresses me most is how well the action plan actually melds with the current initiatives that the city has, and particularly the comprehensive land use plan. And just that recognition that as we look at the issues associated with being age-friendly, that those initiatives not only benefit older adults, but also benefit the community overall. As we look at what are the specific needs perhaps related to older adults, we will see how the types of solutions and plan forward actually helps everyone in the community, young and old. One of the best benefits of the Age Friendly Action Plan is the opportunity that gives members of the community to participate in city planning. Now, I know that this opportunity has always existed, but for me, being part of the task force actually provides a very natural avenue in terms of understanding more deeply the city's priorities and how I can be a part in terms of providing input to those priorities. I will feel a satisfying...
30 seconds.
...of participation when I consult a new community calendar, use a new crosswalk or repaired sidewalk, or use alternative transportation to get to destinations downtown. There are few benefits, these are just a few benefits I anticipate. As we become more entrenched in an age-friendly way of life, the benefits will gradually grow and build upon each other. To me, age-friendly Brevard is simply meant to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kaye Argroves.
My name is Kaye Argroves. I am at 167 Hilt Street on the corner of Hilton Broad. I'm here to ask you to vote in the affirmative for the Age Friendly Action Plan. Several of us locals approached the mayor, requesting her to really see if she could support this, and to her credit, she listened to us. Some of my favorite activities that we did as a result of the survey that looked at what the population here in Brevard wanted, we looked at some of the activities that were really a lot of fun. We had a six-week wellness program. Paula, Dr. Stein, had a physical therapist, dental folks, the school, the nursing school was involved in it. We opened it up to the community at the Mary Jenkins Center, and they were, they came in and had consultations, could have them done privately, and they could have their blood pressure checked. That was a lot of fun. It was later turfed into a support group after the hurricane. We also had a very dynamic program, learning about GPT-6, four, excuse me, GPT and GPT-4, and had the IT security from the Junior College comm and the cyber security to tell us and teach us how to be safer with our internet browsing and that sort of thing, which actually has a long-term effect because it builds in safety. It lowers your responsibilities, and it lowers the police department's responsibilities for scam issues. The task force was very diverse. We had our planning and transportation director, we had a sociologist, part of Brevard was represented with, we had five AARP volunteers, a local physician. And when you looked at the survey, we addressed then, and with our action plan, things that the community was concerned about, they were frustrated with, they criticized, and we addressed some of those issues in very creative ways. The task force was very dynamic.
30 seconds.
Paula Stein wrote several articles which garnered national attention, which made Brevard look very good nationally. So, I can only tell you that I and many of my compatriots in here with, I'm an AARP volunteer, I'm not staff, we're very passionate and committed to this program, and we would request that you vote in the affirmative to this action plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Kaye. Our next speaker is Dave Bradley. You're signed up.
Oh. I'm just here to report for the time.
Okay, all right, Dave, just checking, you signed your name here. Okay.
I've never been an upchair.
All right. Then our next speaker is Jeff Adams.
I'll have to remember that and use that. Jeff Adams, Transylvania County Director of Transportation Planning and Community Development, yeah, 118 Ridgeway, Etowah. Happy New Year, Happy New Year, Paul, Erin, and everyone else. And I want to thank the mayor for reaching out to us and to include us in part of this plan, I think, why it's important. Three things that I want you to remember, where the, and that's not to mention this room. Why is it important? One, just look at the data. We're the sixth oldest county according to the 2020 census in the state. That's out of 100 counties, we're the sixth oldest. Two, just look at your key findings from your survey. I'll note that seven of the eight, whether it's ability to age in place, affordable housing, transportation, conveniently located public parking, safety issues, adult daycare, they're all having to do with planning, transportation, and community development. And those are all things that drive me every day to think about and to make better connections. And that's number three. The, I think of it as an age spectrum, and I think some of the earlier comments talked about what you do for the elderly, also you do for the younger. And so, I like to use, when I'm talking about transportation, community and development, planning, I like to use three images. I asked my son, you know, "What is transportation to you?" And what does he think of a Lamborghini, a Porsche, or something like that? And I said, "You know, it's not just about whether you're Luke Combs or Tracy Chapman, it's not just about a fast car." Because then the next image I want you to think about is that potholed street or that traffic congestion. It's the support, it's the infrastructure, and it's making those connections of getting from point A to point B. And then that third image that I like to think about is that person that has a disability, the elderly person that lives in Deer Lake or that lives in Balsam Grove and needs to get to the medical appointment, or the, or anyone struggling with children or getting from, to school and back. So, when I think about making those connections, it's, what we're doing with this task force is to look at all the age spectrum and for us to think about those planning in advance, whether...
30 seconds.
...whether it's with the city or with the county and those other agencies that need to be at the table that think about our planning for the future. So, thank you and thanks for the consideration.
Thank you, Jeff. Our next speaker is Jeanne Denon.
Good evening, I'm Jeanne Denon. I live at 268 Fox Cross Drive, and I'm here to support Dr. Paula Hartmanstein's program. I've been participating and I've benefited greatly with her program. I'm so thankful, and if I could benefit, I think the whole community can. So, I'm just here to say thank you and please consider it a done deed. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is everybody that has signed up for public comment. All right, we will now move on to our public hearing. Do we have the public hearing sign-up sheet?
No one on it.
Well, so I still need it. Okay. Our public hearing is on the proposed amendment to the city of Brevard fee schedule, utility tap fees, and our city manager will run us through this.
Yes, ma'am. This is a refinement of the concept that I brought to you all at the last meeting over a month ago. And it requires a public hearing because it requires an amendment to the fee schedule. And I asked Becky to go to the fee schedule on the screen there. The actual amendment to the fee schedule is a footnote at the bottom of the fee schedule that says waivers of these fees are available under these conditions. And she's hitting there right now. There you go. Keep going. There you go. Head on down so we can see the blue text at the bottom of the screen. So, that's the actual language of the amendment that we're talking about today. And if you'll go down now to the next page, please, Becky. If this were to pass, we would ask all folks who are applying for this waiver to fill out this form. And I want to put this on the screen because this is the most important document, I think, for the purposes of our discussion today and in two weeks. And these contain the terms under which the waiver would be granted. It would only be available during what I'm calling Chapter 21-based emergency declarations. So, you'll remember, if you'll remember at our last meeting, we passed a second manner in which an emergency declaration can be declared by the mayor and the council, and certain exceptions to the city code that would follow such a declaration. And those were things like exceptions to some of our zoning ordinances, some of our code enforcement things, that would accommodate things like temporary trailers after an emergency. And so, this waiver of the tap fees, which is designed to support temporary uses during the recovery period, would only be available during such a state of emergency. So, that's the first provision. The second provision is that it would be temporary. Like some of those other exceptions I just mentioned, the initial period under which this waiver would be available would be the emergency period that we're in now, which ends in September of next year. So, it's going to be a 12-month emergency period, all told. But unlike the exceptions that we talked about last time, which can be extended through council action alone, if council, when we get to September of 2025, decides to extend those provisions for another six months, say, to support recovery, this would need to be reapplied for. So, if you were a recipient of this waiver, you would need to come in in September of next year and reapply for this. And that is to emphasize the temporary nature of this waiver, because the temporary nature of it is what makes it legal or what makes it, it protects us from some of the questions about its legality, if we can emphasize that it is a legal measure, a temporary measure. And so, as I said, in September of next year, if you're a person who's got this waiver, you'll need to come back and reapply for it. And at that time, you'll need to reaffirm, as you do when you initially applied, that the use you're applying for the waiver for is temporary and is also in support of recovery. And the proposal would give our zoning administrator, Paul Ray, the ability to exercise judgment on what is a temporary use that's in support of recovery. It would endow him with that ability. It would endow him with that ability. So those are the main conditions of this waiver. It is for a limited time, and it's only for temporary uses that support recovery from the emergency that the declaration has been made for. When the tap that's had its fee waived loses its waiver eligibility, and that can happen in a few ways, which I'll go over in a second, the applicant would have 30 days to pay the fee in full, or else we will cut off the utility service and recover the meter. And when they sign up for the waiver, they agree that, they agree to that condition, and they also agree to waive us of any damage that cutting the property, cutting the property's access to utilities might cause. The conditions under which a tap that's received a waiver may lose its eligibility are: the state of emergency ends, and it could lapse in September of next year, or it could be cut short by an action of council. The state of emergency is extended, but these applicants do not reapply. The temporary use becomes permanent in the judgment of the zoning administrator, or the temporary use ceases to be used for recovery-related purposes, in the opinion of the zoning administrator. So if any one of those conditions were to apply, the applicant would, as I said, have 30 days to pay it in full, or we would cut off their utility access and recover the meter. And so that's my proposal. Those are the conditions under which I propose we grant such a waiver. I hope we don't have to use this, and I don't think we're gonna have to. But as I said at the last meeting, if the trailers that Angie had set up, or the trailers that the plat folks had set up, had required a new utility tap, were we gonna say no to them? Because they weren't going to be able to pay the fee? Of course not. And so this just codifies that value in, to a policy that we can point to and execute consistently with whoever applies and is eligible for it. So that's my proposal here for the hearing. As I said, we haven't had any applicants or any requests for this waiver so far, and so I don't think it is a time-sensitive thing, and therefore I think we can follow our normal procedures and take a vote or take action on this next time around, if the council wants to move forward with it.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. We will now officially open the public hearing. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Show me.
Do I have a second?
Second.
The hearing is officially open. Nobody signed up to speak. Do I have a motion to officially close the public hearing?
Show me.
Do I have a second?
Seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
The hearing is closed. We will now open it for any questions of the manager from council. Mr. Baker.
Sure. Just a couple of general questions. On the length of the emergency declaration, how did, how did we go about determining, you know, what that length should be?
Some of the provisions that we offered exceptions for last time were originally for 680 days or six months in the code, right, Paul?
Right.
And so we just doubled that, felt that was a good round number that gave folks enough time to accomplish the things they needed to accomplish for recovery.
And in this particular instance, is that in line with what we're seeing with some other municipalities, or?
I don't know of anyone else who's doing this.
Okay. And then towards the end, when, you know, the year comes up, are we, I assume we're gonna be sending out some sort of notice about that, is that correct?
Yes, sir, we'd send a courtesy notice.
Okay. I think those are all my questions.
Mr. Daniel?
I don't think I have any questions on this.
Mr. Morrow?
Mr. Hoover's explanation that we just codify what we would want to do anyway. Thank you.
Ms. Holder?
I was thinking that it was a year, is that correct?
A year from the time the emergency was declared, yeah.
The date of the state of emergency. If the funds are not, if someone is applying and we don't collect those funds, what happens?
We'll cut off their utility access and reclaim their meter. But I hadn't planned on proposing that we, you know, exercise some of our other options like the debt set-off program that we can do for other overdue utility fees, or putting a lien on the property or anything like that. I think that in this case, we would just write it off.
And that's in the budget to be allowed?
I, I think that we will not have so many of these that it would become a financial burden.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Wise?
I don't have any further questions.
Okay. Well, we will move on then. All right, we next have the consent and information agenda. The following items are on it. One, the tax settlement report from November of '24. Two, property tax releases December of '24. Three, proclamation number 2024, Tac 26, Mayor declares state of emergency Tropical Storm Helene. Four, resolution in support of Tobacco 21 to protect our kids from vaping and nicotine addiction. Five, the city manager employment agreement amendments. Six, the finance report at September 30th, 2024. Seven, Council Downtown Master Plan Committee minutes, September 19th of '24. Eight, Council Finance, Human Resources, and Citizen Appointment Committee minutes of October 28th of '24. Nine, Council Public Safety Committee minutes, October 28th, '24. Ten, Acoustic Trail Advisory Board minutes, October 30th, '24. Eleven, Council Public Works and Utilities Committee minutes, November 6th, '24. Twelve, Council Housing Committee minute, meeting minutes, November 19th, '24. Thirteen, Council Parks, Trails, and Recreation Committee minutes, November 20th, '24. And fourteen, Correspondence, No Action, Information Only, the ABC Board minutes, October 24th of '24. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Show me.
Okay. There was a second there somewhere.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's approved. Moving on to unfinished business, we have the ordinance for the voluntary contiguous annexation of the Mills Avenue Properties LLC, Forest Hill Drive, and Aaron Bland, our Assistant Planning Director, will run us through this.
Excuse me, Mayor, I've got one introductory comment to make. At the last meeting, Councilman Baker asked for some supplementary information on how this annexation might impact trail development in the vicinity, since there's an existing segment and an easement nearby. And so I've asked Aaron to talk a little bit more and provide that supplementary information about trail development in the area. And he'll answer questions from council on that, if you have any.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is not in the packet?
Sure.
Is this in the packet?
Okay, and that is supplementary information I just handed out, that's not in your packet, specific to the existing easement a little to the south of these properties. But just to remind you, there was a public hearing about this annexation request held on December 2nd. It is a request for four different parcels on Forest Hill Drive. They're currently located within the ETJ and Zone General Residential 4, and they're all currently vacant. The planning board recommended in favor of this at their November 19th meeting, and the action options you have before you tonight are either to approve or deny the annexation request. And quick overview of what I just handed out, it is a summary of an existing easement that the city has between Forest Hill Road and a piece of property owned by the Board of Education. This was an easement that was put in place during the development of Cadence Point, which is directly across the street from these four parcels to be annexed. But the easement itself is actually three parcels south of these four parcels, so it's not in the subject area being described tonight, but it is nearby. And a connection from Cadence Point to the eventual main artery of the Greenway, which will go through that Board of Education property, has always sort of been considered as something to connect to in the future. So I just have the map in there, and then the actual plat that shows the easement's location is there as well. Most of the information typed out was previously sent out in one of the manager memos that he sends out weekly. So that's just a summary of what we discovered, but ultimately, what's before you right now is the annexation of those four vacant parcels.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bland. Do I have a motion concerning the annexation?
Move we adopt, Bland is presenting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we'll open it for discussion. Mr. Morrow?
We've been looking at this for several months, it seems like, Aaron. So it's finally nice to be here, and we're again adding a little bit more city space, so that's good. Thank you.
Ms. Holder?
No comments.
Mr. Wise?
No comment.
Mr. Daniel?
I have no comment.
Mr. Baker?
Yeah, thank you for giving us this information, this is helpful. And obviously, I'm in favor of the annexation. I just have a question on, you know, if we determine in the future that some sort of additional easement through these properties or other properties might be helpful, I guess what's the most likely trigger for a conversation like that? Is that development of the four properties?
The actual development of the parcels is when we bring that up. I would anticipate that after these are annexed, someone would come to us with some sort of idea for them, and then we would bring this up at that point.
Right.
We've brought it up with past owners, and it hasn't really gone anywhere, but if it turns over to a developer who might see the value in that connection, if they're gonna develop it, we would ask at that point, when they actually have a development idea.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the annexation. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. All right, we are moving on to new business. The first item is the Age Friendly Brevard Action Plan 2025. I believe city manager will start the presentation.
Yes, ma'am, this, as a reminder to council, this is a follow-up to an action you took last February, when you agreed to apply for membership in the AARP's age-friendly program. Members in that program are asked to perform a community-wide review of their age-friendliness and create an action plan, which the group has done, and will here briefed tonight by Councilmember Wise. Per council's request, Brevard's assessment and action plan was not created by staff, but by volunteers, and so that's why CM Wise, rather than a staff person, will be presenting his findings tonight.
All right. Councilman Wise.
CM Wise. Oh, I know what it means. I know what it means.
I'm just here to interpret, that's all I do.
You know, and Wise is a dubious last name at best. So first of all, our well-informed public has stolen some of my thunder and informed you of a lot of what I'm gonna talk about now, so some of this may be a little repetitive, so bear with me, drink some water, have a good time, you know? It's the beginning of the new year. So Brevard is a growing community, and we don't always have the most accurate info about what's happening in our community. And so I would say any opportunity that we had to learn more about what's going on can only help us as the city council to govern as a whole for all the people. And while this particular focus here is about age-friendly, as it has an age-friendly focus, the intent of it will benefit everyone in our community. So Brevard is ranked as number six in 100 counties for the highest mean age population, which is quite a remarkable feat. Our over 65 population is 33% of our community and growing, and many of those have been here for 10 years or less. Driven by this kind of community input and concern, at our February meeting, city council endorsed a resolution agreeing to pursue the AARP's age-friendly community designation, which we have since applied for. This program calls for a volunteer group to review the city's plans through an age-specific lens by conducting a survey and developing an action plan with the goal to better understand the concerns and successes of this growing segment of our community. This task force was led by Dr. Hartman Stein, a clinical psychologist, I'm gonna get this wrong, so you know, a clinical psychologist specializing in geriatric behavioral health. And she's been instrumental in spearheading connections to this community in general. But the rest of our task force was made up of two city council members, Dr. Holder, who is also the chair of the Council Housing Committee, me, who is the vice chair of Public Works, and vice chair of Public Trails and Recreation, Parks, Trails and Recreation, the mayor, the chair of Heart of Brevard, representatives from Transylvania County Recreation Department and Transportation Department, numerous AARP representatives, other important public members, and a consultation from Jeff Adams, who I don't know if is here, who is the director of planning in Transylvania County. So it's a pretty nice task force. The primary goal was to survey residents over 50, and use that information to create an action plan to give the city greater insight into the concerns and needs of this group. Additionally, the task force conducted four listening sessions, open to all members of the community. On October 8th, our city council was presented with the age survey results, which was a basis for this report. And it was noted that at that time, the next step was working on an action plan to identify where the City of Brevard, Transylvania County, nonprofits, and others could help make a difference. The task force used templates and other action plans from accepted AARP programs to help create our plan. So that's a little bit of background. About the report itself, as mentioned earlier, the AARP sort of uses these eight domains of livability as a way to organize and prioritize their work. Those are housing, outdoor spaces and living, transportation, civic participation and employment, communication and information, respect and social inclusion, social participation, health services, and community support. After completing our survey, it showed us that civic participation, social inclusion, and social participation were either of very little concern or very little interest to our survey group, so we focused on the five primary domains that did mean the most to this group of people. In the action report, for each domain, you will see for a summarized, summarization of the survey results, we looked at the current practices happening in the city and county and nonprofits that were in relationship to those goals, and we created future action items to help move forward with those goals. And a quick summary of each. Housing, obviously there's a need for safe, income-appropriate housing for everybody, and a concern about what age-in-place programs we have in our community and how we can improve those age-in-place programs. I think this one is no surprise, the city is currently very focused on providing housing for this community, it's a desperately needed resource. I do want to step in as an architect and say that I think some terms like age-in-place or age-friendly are a bit loaded. The current standard would be to create age-in-place housing, no matter who gets into that housing, because age-in-place is also analogous with ADA-friendly housing, and I think that this is a, in residential architecture, it's a standard at this point, and we need to make sure that everyone, no matter who they are, how old they are, has an opportunity to get into housing that's safe for them. The second domain was transportation. People were looking for a more robust transportation system, and they wanted to expand mobility throughout Brevard, which included, I think, which is interesting, walking, biking, and public transit. And we've also worked with the county and Jeff on how we can continue to make our transportation system more robust. But I was really interested in the fact of the walking and biking and getting people engaged with our existing and future paths and walkways, which is another kind of priority strategic plan for us. Outdoor spaces improve safety. Outdoor spaces, improved safety, availability and accessibility of existing outdoor spaces, so all can enjoy and utilize these amenities, and enhance walkability of the city. HOB just did their walkability survey, and that'll be coming out very soon to kind of look at this condition of our sidewalks. I believe all of us on city council participated in that, and so that's a constant metric we're trying to improve, and Public Works is always making our sidewalks better. Finally, is, or the second to last, is health services and community supports. Ensure that healthcare options are readily available to Brevard residents and ensure healthy life choices are readily available. I think this one doesn't deal directly with the city of Brevard. We're not going to open a hospital or a doctor's office, but we have already done, as mentioned before, a number of wellness programs for our community, which was open to all members of the community, where you could go in for a screening, you could go in for physical therapy, or just talk to somebody. And that, after Hurricane Helene, sort of moved into listening sessions with our community to where people could talk about their experience during and after Hurricane Helene in a safe space, and that was also open to all members of the community, and also included the Blue Ridge Community College nursing program, which I think we got to hear their insights into how they dealt with Hurricane Helene. And finally, is communication and information. This is always a bit of an intangible. I don't know how you, you'll never successfully communicate with everybody the way they want to communicate, but there are many metrics we can do to help improve how we communicate, and I think one I would point out, too, that we've already are working on now, is how the city of Brevard communicates. Our communication efforts have ramped up tremendously in the past couple of years, and I think, you know, we got a lot of insight about, well, what about the paper? What about nonprofits? So we're looking into those opportunities to get everyone informed. One of the things we heard is people want to use our trails, but they don't know how to actually get to a trailhead, you know? So, and that may seem kind of like, wow, I mean, I know how to get to the trailhead, but a lot of people don't. And I think that's one of those metrics that you may not think about actively. So those are all, those are kind of the five main domains for living in our action report. And I think the things we can take away from this are, the reason we're asking for the city council to accept this report is the value of a document like this, outside of being able to participate in the AARP age-friendly communities program, which alone has a whole raft of benefits, is to ensure the strategic priorities that we identified as a city council and enumerated in our comprehensive land use plan are aligned with the needs of our community. And I do feel this plan acts in support and helps define those priorities and shows that those priorities communicated by this group of people are in line with our cities as a whole. I think that's really valuable information to have. This plan should be viewed as a useful look into this specific community needs, but as a whole, as a support document for the entire comprehensive land use plan. And that's all I got.
Do I have a motion concerning the resolution to accept the age-friendly action plan?
So move.
Second.
All right, I'll open it for discussion. Mr. Morrow.
First of all, I'd like to thank Lauren for that explanation of the report, and for those who spoke tonight and support of it. It's no doubt, to me, the action word that I see in it, that it complements the existing plans that we have. And by accepting it, we're in, it's a way of acknowledging what the city has already been working towards. And having the AARP as a partner has been wonderful. They helped us with the community gardens. We've worked together on other projects, and so it's a follow-up to where we started a few months ago. And so I would like to congratulate the All-Star Task Force. And as someone said tonight, it was something that maybe should be meant to be. And the fact that we have Dr. Stein in our midst and other volunteers who are so motivated to help us, it reflects what we should do. And that's how you make a difference in the community. And it's sort of like, is Reverend Ben prayed tonight, nurturing the bonds of community. When he said that, I said, aha, that's what this is about. And so I would like to congratulate you at this point of where you've come from. It does meld with, as Sarah Kemp says, with current plans that supports it, and so I thank you.
Mr. Baker?
Sure. First, I want to, I do want to thank the task force. It's obvious that a lot of good work was done and a lot of effort put into putting this together. You know, I want to echo what was already said, that it's very encouraging that a lot of the priorities in this plan dovetail with priorities that this council has stated over and over again are the priorities for the entire city. I'll also add that it was encouraging to me that this, you know, the demographic that this report is focused on, overall feels pretty positive about what the city is already doing, and sort of backs up a lot of the things that we've had going on. I do have a couple of questions, and, you know, I guess I'll ask you to excuse me a little bit. This is, you know, the final year of my council term, and this particular ask is a little bit outside of the norm of what we see on a daily basis, so I just want to ask staff and some of the task force members as well, just to clarify a few things and understand where this project sits in the context of what the city has going on. So my first question, and I guess I'm going to direct these to Councilmember Wise, since you introduced this. And I wish Jeff was still here, because I think I could have asked this to him as well, but it stuck out to me that a few of the major areas of focus in the plan, transportation and health, are of particular importance to the county. You know, they have departments devoted to those, whereas the city doesn't. And so I'm curious whether the task force will ask the county for their approval of the plan, or how the task force will interact with the county going forward.
I'm going to, can I give that to you, Maureen?
Yes, thank you. No, we, this would be approved, accepted by the city, but we have integrated a lot of the county plans. We would work in conjunction with the county. We would, of course, share the plan officially with the county, but we would not be asking the county to vote, because this is the city of Brevard. County has not joined the AARP age-friendly community. So, and we have had great, I want to say, this also, we have had great support from the county. The county has been part of this. Their recreation department was part of it. Jeff was part of it. Their housing folks reviewed it, and they actually came up with the action items that list the county. They actually drafted those, and so it's right in line with what they want to do. So I think it's a great way for us to collaborate with the county in another way, but it would not be officially given to them to vote on. It's not a joint document.
Right. Well, I would, I guess I would, I agree with you that I think there's a lot of opportunity for collaboration between the city and the county around the, around the report. So even if they're not voting on it, I would encourage the task force to, you know, try to engage with the county as much as you can and maybe get it on an agenda to approve or to present to them.
Absolutely.
That would be great.
Great idea.
My next question is related to that, just, you know, where does the, where does the task force go from here? I mean, at this point, it's a little bit of a milestone, and so what is next for the task force?
Would you like me to?
I would.
Thank you. Yes, once we get this approved tonight by council, we will officially send it off to AARP, you know, as our official plan, and they will, they will review it and make sure it fits. You know, they have very strict criteria of what had to be in it, which we have followed to the letter, so I anticipate no problems. And then the task force, if you notice, we have, the different actions are by year, and so we would be looking at those actions for year one, and then working with staff, because at this point, it would basically be a document endorsed by council. So then staff, when, say, we're looking at the housing, you know, we would want to make sure that we're considering all ages. Some things the task force will do on its own, like some things that are sort of outside the scope of really an elected municipal body. We are already looking at possibly holding a workshop on how to make your home more age-friendly, bringing in contractors and experts to talk to the public, anyone that's interested, and have this as a general information session. We're looking at possibly continuing a second year with the nursing staff with Blue Ridge to build on that relationship and help, you know, again, our partner, Blue Ridge Community College, really help them develop their nursing program to understand this demographic. The task force will do a lot of the liaison, a lot of, you know, that coordination, but they are not, you know, if you look, each one of these has really sort of the proposed partners that would work on each action item. Some of them are embedded in the city. If you look at an action item where we look at parking, we've already discussed at the downtown master plan committee, when they discussed doing a parking study, that one of the criteria for the contractor was, it's suggested, it hasn't been approved yet, it hasn't come up here, was that the older demographic ought to be considered when that study is done. What are the parking needs of our, you know, one-third of our population that is over 65? So that's sort of the focus that the task force then takes on. The task force is sort of a catalyst for some of this. It, you know, is an expertise that we bring that staff can basically tap into, and some things that the task force will actually do themselves, some of the more, what I call more of the soft items, some more of the community connection outreach and education.
Okay, that's helpful. And I think my remaining questions are for Wilson and the staff. You know, the mayor mentioned that, you know, there were, there might be certain items on here that the staff needs to work on. Is that, is that done through the existing committee structure? Part of what makes this unique is that this is not a, an official city committee where we have, you know, established processes for voting on things and recommending from those committees up to city council. So I assume that the task force would interact with our existing committees for actions taken, which would then come before city council?
Yes, sir. So I was trying to think of an example, and I'm looking at the transportation section. Say the task force, you know, with the county said something like, you know, we want to try to increase ridership of our van service by building fancy new shelters in city rights of way around town. Well, I would bring that to a committee to evaluate whether we wanted to do that or not, whether we wanted to use our right-of-way space to accommodate those kind of shelters. And so I don't see this document as sort of a blanket permission to do anything. It's permission to consider it and to bring it to you all to work through the details.
Yeah, and I guess that's a good opportunity for me to ask you just to clarify, because I think the staff report referenced the land use plan and the bike and pedestrian plan alongside a plan like this. And while this is a, it's a great plan, again, you know, from the city's perspective, those two plans were produced with staff involvement, with years of public input, and, you know, a third-party vendor who actually helped us produce the plan. So in the context of those two things, how do you, how do you see this plan interacting with the city?
Yeah, I thank you for that question. So after I sent out the agenda, I sort of realized that it implied that this plan would be on the same level as the comprehensive land use plan, and it wouldn't be. You know, the comprehensive land use plan is a policy document. It is permission from you all to pursue different actions that are listed in there. This would be a supplementary document. It would be something that we'd refer to. It'd be something that we saw as an expression of you all's values, but as I said, it would just be permission to consider things and not to actually implement them. So it'd be different than the club in that way.
Right, and that's helpful. And I, again, I'm very positive about this plan. I think it's great, the task force work, I think it's honestly just, it's a unique situation, so I want to see how it's going to interact with how the city does business, and want to put it in the proper context of other things that we've got going on. Again, a lot of the priorities are very similar, but, you know, we've got some established ways of talking through things and establishing the priorities for the entire city, which is why we're up here. So I just wanted to make note of those, and, you know, again, thank you for the report. I think it's, you know, it's great to see these results and happy to vote to accept it.
Ms. Holder?
Not because I serve on the task force, but I am excited to embrace and endorse this. Mason said to me a while back, he wants to buy a Lamborghini, and he wants to be a pastor. I want to see how he does that. And then he pointed to my seat in the car, and he said, Mama, you're going to sit right there. And of course, I'm thinking, what's going to happen to me? And I think this answers a lot of those questions about what will happen to persons as they get into the age-friendly capacity. And as I look around this room, there might be four or five people who are younger than 50, myself. Okay, I won't finish that. But before you know it, when you wake up, you too will be in this 50-plus club, and it's a great club to be in, and I'm just excited that Brevard is embracing this. I feel like that I have a place in the world where so many people feel like those places are lost because of the age, and I have friends who have lost their jobs because of age. But when you're in a place where you're embraced and still loved, and you feel it, and you know it, and you're a part of it, you look forward to embracing what is here. So I'm excited about the work that has gone into it, about the, what Dr. Hartman Stein has just put, you know, her whole heart and soul into it, as though she was the only one who would qualify, but she's doing this for everybody, whether you're in this generation now, or when you wake up in a couple of days and you're there, you'll have somewhere to be. So thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Daniel?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a couple of questions before I have made my statements. The comment about, I wasn't sure, clear on your answer about how this ranks with the trail and the other priorities that we've set. You referred to the comprehensive plan, not to those particular aspects in your response.
You talking about the sidewalk and trail plans?
Yes.
In particular?
The one, the question that Erin asked you.
I'm sorry?
The question that Erin asked you.
Yes, sir. I'd have to go back and look at the resolutions that were passed with those, but I think those were full endorsements by the council. And just based on the priorities that the council has set over the last few years with regard to development of the trail and sidewalks and other things, if you're asking me to rank those, I'd say that those sort of rank in a tier higher than this would.
That is what I'm asking. The other question I had, the mayor said that this task force would be working with How does that work?
Well, we, you know, we work with staff from Habitat and other partners, and so I'd consider this group to be a partner akin to groups like that.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, I would also like to thank the report. It's good to know that Brevard is already doing many of the things that are on this list, and it's good to know that our citizens, older citizens, all And it's good to know that our citizens, older citizens, all the citizens that participate in this are generally happy with the way things are going, with some concerns. But I also have some concerns about the report. One of them is that I consider this to be a policy document. I know we're not, I know we're voting to accept, but not to adopt this. I'm not sure what the difference, what that means exactly, what that difference is. But I think it's clear that we have said as a council that we have a very clear expectation that policy matters come through the committees. They don't come to us from ad hoc committees, they don't come from individuals, they come through our committees and their, their process through that. And I think there's a reason for that. I think this plan is very thorough, obviously, but which means that it also affects planning, parks and trails, finance, as to tow trail. It affects just about every committee that we have without any consideration from those committees. I think as a matter of, of, of structure, that, you know, if, if we're gonna say that about some of the other items that we've sent back, then we need to say the same about this. I think this needs a go-to committee. I don't think that would change the outcome in any way, but I do feel like there is a procedure that we have established that to deviate from that is an aberration, I feel, and says something about us as a committee or a council. This council has stated for quite some time and often our, our long-term priorities. As it relates, saying that as it relates to this report, I think that the, the language needs to be tweaked. So that, it needs to be refined, so that it better meets the existing priorities that we have. Again, the thing that we are already doing are fulfilling the mission of this report. And to change the focus, which I think some of the wording in this document does, is not helpful. So I'm concerned about that. I went on the AARP site for the age-friendly communities, and I would, I would recommend you all do that. It's one of the best sites I've ever been on. You can, it's, it's made for people like us. It's, all you do is just follow, it's very easy to get there. You go to state, North Carolina, up comes all the communities, cities, organizations that are age-friendly, and you can punch on those, and it will actually have the documents that they submitted to apply for this. None of them that I saw, except for maybe Carrie, reached the complexity of this document. That's good for the work that's done, but it also, I think, well, I just, in other words, Mount Airy, I believe, they said, they refer to active adults. Hendersonville has a paragraph that says that their action is to build trails to connect the city. I guess they mean the Acoustic Trail. So, and that's it. I mean, that's all they're doing. So I, I really feel like, you know, I have, I have an issue about that. The, the other thing is, is we have a ranking of 57 on there, out of 100, I suppose. And, and under one of them, housing, we're like 60-something, we have plenty of housing, which is pretty much contrary to every piece of data that's been presented to this council in the last three years. Or, well, let me back up 10 years, that's how long I've been on here. So that's just an aside. But also, the ranking for opportunity is 29, I think. And one of the reasons for that is, one of the criteria is age diversity. We're low on age diversity. And it's not because of not very many elderly people here, because there aren't any young people here. My whole 10 years that I've been here, I've been trying to advocate for age diversity in our community by supporting younger families to make it easier for them to come here. I do not want to take any of that momentum away by concentrating on a, a population that, hey, I'm part of, you know, I'm 75. But my friends, the folks that I know, we're all active, we get around, we're, we're benefiting from what the city is doing now without this endorsement. But that, so that, I have some concerns, and I want to, before I decide how to vote, I want to know what the difference between, and I, I want to be very clear on what it means, the difference between accept and adopt. And I'm asking you that, Wilson.
I think that if you adopted, we'd take that as permission to take some of these recommendations and invest quite a significant amount of staff time and resources coming up with proposals to implement them. And since we're coming up on budget season, that would probably include a couple of service-level changes, so requests for new money to help implement some of these things. Whereas accept, I see it as you all, as I said before, giving us permission to add this to our library. And so when we're sitting around the staff table, coming up with ways to recommend to you all ways to execute your vision, we can look to this as a reference. And we can say, one of the ways they want to increase transportation and people's mobility is trails and things, but also transit. And is there a way we can support transit? And so if the county came to the door and said, using the example I gave earlier, "We want to try to increase transit ridership, do you all want to help?", we'd say, "Yeah, we want to help. We're not gonna invest a million dollars, but if you want us to, you know, think about putting the shelters on the sidewalk, we'll consider that. We'll find a way to support that somehow." But without the same level of investment of resources and money and so forth as, as things that you have adopted, like the club.
What about housing? Because I did see that housing prioritizing units for the elderly, which, again, that's, I was on the housing committee for quite a while, and that is not what the mission was when I was there.
The Housing Trust Fund, for example, spending that money, you know, will always, what we spend that money on will always be up to the committee and by extension, the council. And you all will always be the final decision-makers with regard to how to spend that Housing Trust Fund dollar. But what I interpret this document to mean is that if a developer of 55-plus housing comes to the door and asks us to, you know, consider partnering with him or her, we will listen to what they have to say.
That's all I have.
Mr. Wise.
Gosh, I mean, I already talked so much. I was just saying that the thing that excites me most about this plan is really the integration into our existing priorities, knowing that we had done a lot of work looking at our strategic priorities and, and are on target. And I think that's really useful information, if nothing else. And this obviously helps our entire community. And we are not focusing on any one segment outside of that's the scope of this particular document. The intent is to enrich our entire community.
All right. We have a motion and a second.
Could I just, sorry, follow up with one more comment? And not a question, just a comment. I just want to clarify and talk, you know, about why, you know, obviously, we've had a pretty lengthy discussion about this, and it seems like such a wonderful thing, and it is a wonderful thing. I, I think what the city has sometimes struggled with in the past, we're, we're a small city, and we have limited resources. And we have a few priorities that we can really focus on. Our, our, you know, the amount of money that this, these folks up here can realistically change in the budget from year to year is tiny. I wish it was bigger, but every budget year, the, the answer is the same. And so when we're asking a lot of questions about something that seems so great, it's not because we don't think it's great, it's because the, the documents that we use and the plan that we put forward has to be so laser-focused, because it can be so easy for a small city to be sort of like the golden retriever in that movie Up and, you know, Squirrel, you know? It's like the least, the, the, the most recent thing that just pops up can grab your attention and take away from the resources that have been assigned to other priorities through a lot, a lot of work and a lot of background and a lot of discussions. And so I guess that's just to clarify some of my questions, is to see how this fits in with our overall priorities, so that we can make sure that we're not getting distracted from, from other priorities and, and making sure that it sort of dovetails to the T with, with what else we've got going on, and we can understand how we're directing staff by taking this action, because, believe it or not, we don't have, you know, that many opportunities to direct staff. So, you know, clarifying how this is going to be used is, is incredibly important, so.
I'd like to make another statement as well.
Yes, Mr. Daniel.
I agree that this is a, a good thing. This is not something that I am against in principle. However, I have so many questions about how this all works and how this changes some of the things that we've discussed, that I don't feel that I can support this. And I just wanted to explain that.
Any other comments?
Just one more.
Ms. Holder.
When I first interviewed for my job here, I was told that this is a retirement city. And I thought, well, people retire and then they die, so what happens to the city? But when I look at the numbers, and I heard 33% tonight, there's still 67. And in the cycle of life, we're preparing for that 67 that's coming up. The 33%, now, here we are, but we have a 67% that's our young focus to keep the city going and get ready for that next cycle, when we're no longer here.
Mr. Moore.
You know, I, I used to think we were number one in the state. So I'm thinking, well, maybe it was the young people that came and changed that dynamic. So I would like to know, I, you know, I really did think that, you know, 10 years ago, we were probably number one. So, but everywhere I look, I see young people.
I do, too.
You know, and, and young ones. So anyway, thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Four ayes, one nay, the resolution is approved. All right. I think at this point, we will take a 10-minute break. Thank you.
Each of these nonprofits are sort of competing with 20 other people each year.
Hmm.
And, and it, there's a little bit of uncertainty about whether they're going to be funded or not. So, this might, from, from the nonprofit standpoint, give them a little bit more certainty about where their funding's coming from if they were a vendor.
And would that change, if they were to become a vendor, would that then change the, the budgeting on the back end so that they're, they would no longer be considered part of this non- nonprofit?
Yeah, yeah, it would also open up
Right.
more nonprofit funding.
Right. Okay. And then just a clarifying question on the, um, the review of the applications. So, the committee will review everything. Um, are, are they getting presentations from nonprofits themselves or just the applications?
Right now, we're just getting the applications. In fact, the applications were emailed and put on our website on December 20th, and they're due in on January 31st. Another problem is we were a little late in prior years. So, we're trying to kind of get ahead of the game. Once those applications are received, they will be transmitted to Finance and HR Committee, as, as well as the Full City Council. The Finance HR Committee will make a recommendation to the city manager, which will be included in the recommended budget. And Wilson's right, that was really one of the most forgot.
So,
Yeah.
So, the council will be able to see the, all the applications, but we will then also see the, the recommendation from the committee in the actual budget itself.
Yeah, and as any part of the recommended budget, the council may
Make changes.
agree or disagree with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Baker?
That's it.
Mr. Morrow?
I liked also the, um, the, the reporting requirements in there. So, I, I thought that was a really nice part. Good. Thanks.
Did I get everybody? Everybody had their chance? Yes. Okay. Lost track. All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. All right, we're moving on to our third item. The NCLM Municipal Advocacy Goals. Mr. Manager?
Yes, ma'am. We did this once two years ago at the start of the last long session in Raleigh. Essentially, what I'm asking you all to consider tonight is your top 10 legislative advocacy themes from the list of 16 or 18 or so themes that were submitted to us by the League's Legislative Policy Committee. For the viewing audience, the North Carolina League of Municipalities is a statewide org that supports municipalities in a number of ways, perhaps most notably as our lobbyists with the General Assembly in Raleigh. Since the state government is our parent agency and the statutes define what we can and cannot do, we need such advocacy with our lawmakers as they're making the laws. The Legislative Policy Committee itself, on which I used to serve, but I've cycled out, is made up of elected and appointed officials from municipalities across the state, and, and this is important, from municipalities of all sizes. So, it's a intentionally representative group. It's not just big cities, it's not just small towns, it's everybody. With that said, the themes that this group comes up with are still subject to vote from the entire league membership, and that's what we're doing here today. For the purposes of this vote, our vote is weighted the same as Charlotte's. One city, one vote. Now, I'll say that the big cities have other resources that they can bring to bear on advocacy in Raleigh, but for the purposes of picking these themes with the league, it's one city, one vote. And the top 10 themes, or the top, the 10 themes that receive the most votes from participating municipalities will constitute the league's lobbying agenda. So, you can see on the screen the 10 proposals that I'm making. This list, the mayor and I put our heads together and developed. We think that these are the most relevant to us, but of course, if you all think differently, it's your prerogative to change this list. And, uh, whichever 10 you choose, I'm hoping that we can agree on those tonight so that we can submit our vote to the league by the deadline, and they can have their legislative agenda in hand by the time the session starts at the end of the month.
All right, we have a resolution. Oh, I need a motion to approve the resolution to start discussion. Do I have a motion regarding the resolution which lists the, the 10 that Wilson just mentioned?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Well, open it for discussion. Mr. Morrow?
You know, you read these and you just, they're, they're almost wishful because looking at the, knowing the, the, the legislature, but it's nice to have them down in writing.
Mr. Baker?
Yeah, I'll unfortunately agree with that, that, um, you know, our state legislature has not found itself to be very friendly to, um, the cities that make up the majority of its, um, population here in North Carolina, but, uh, it's great, great to ask. You know, I've learned, I said earlier, this is like my fourth, fourth year on council, and I've learned that, just how much is controlled at the state level in, in our, in our, uh, state here. Uh, and unfortunately, they have a, a ton of power there in Raleigh to really dictate what, local cities can do and the solutions that we can bring forward. A lot of times, we hear, you know, from citizens, "Well, why can't you do this and why can't you do that?" And the answer is, because the state doesn't let us do any of that. And, uh, that's just the reality that we're living in. So, always great to have goals like this and, um, uh, thank the manager for, for putting this together, and I think it's a, a good list.
Ms. Holder?
I asked this question out of ignorance, and I asked Google because Google knows everything. But Google still does not give me a clear answer, and again, I'm asking out of ignorance. Please don't say out loud, that's a stupid question. But why are residents of the ETJ not allowed to vote in, um, in the city?
Because they don't pay city taxes. Because they're not citizens of the city. It's, the ETJ is, is a special zoning consideration that is, um, solely for property use in the areas immediately around the city to, keep there from being a house in the city. And the next door neighbor have a herd of cattle or start a cement plant right next door. It's a way to sort of ease into, um, into the city's more intensive zoning, because, I mean, the ETJ is only going to apply in a certain area, and it's going to be where people are more concentrated anyway. And so that, that's, so that's why.
So, that can never change?
What do you mean, that can never change?
It can never, they can never become
They can be annexed into the city.
Oh, they can?
They can voluntarily annex into the city.
And we've seen that a lot lately.
Yeah, and oftentimes, that's what people do, so they can receive city services like, if you're in the ETJ, you can't, uh, attach to city sewer.
Yeah, okay.
And, uh, so that would be, at, at one time, it, it was kind of areas that were likely to become annexed later, but the General Assembly has, within the last five or 10 years, really limited the ability to involuntarily annex people into the city limits. But that's, that's the reason for it, and, um, and that's why, uh, but they, that's why they don't get to vote, because they don't pay taxes in the city. They don't pay any city taxes.
But they can option to
But they can voluntarily
To voluntarily get annexed, okay.
Yes.
That totally makes more sense than Google. Thank you.
I, I can get even more clear, but I can't compete with Google too much.
No, you're clear as much, I'm sorry, that was clear. Thank you.
Just like we annexed tonight, today.
Yeah, those properties.
They needed the city services.
Okay, so now they get to vote?
Right.
Okay.
Any other comments, Ms. Holder?
No, thank you.
Mr. Wise?
Could we, between you and me, could we slip in one or two more of these? I mean, no one's, no one's going to really know, right?
Well, what I was going to say is that if there's, there's not an appetite from the rest of the council to replace any of these.
No.
Because we can only do 10.
Okay.
Uh, the next item on the agenda, we have more flexibility on.
Great.
So, if there's a theme here you want to include in that, we can do that.
Well, I was just, um, I, I, I think this is a good list. Um, I like a lot of the things on the 16. But we did just see legislation pass at the state level that stripped local, local communities of more power, so I think, especially pertaining to maybe, I don't know if it's in here specifically, so, um, pertaining to zoning. So, in any case, yeah, um, I think this is a solid list. We just need, you know, all of them.
Mr. Daniel?
Well, I don't suppose I need to add any more to this gloom of, uh, but these all seem like worthwhile suggestions to me, so we can, we can hope. This is my New Year's resolution.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving on to item four, the City of Brevard legislative requests.
Yes, ma'am. So, as I said before, that list is for, um, all municipalities across the state. This next item will be for our specific legislative request. And even though we'll be doing our own sort of lobbying for these particular things, we're going to do it using the advice of the North Carolina League of Municipalities, who does this professionally, and so their advice is worth a lot, in my opinion. If you'll notice that both lists, the one we just approved and the one that's proposed here, both list themes rather than specific pieces of legislation. And that's intentional for a couple reasons. The first is that, since this is the beginning of the long session, where new proposals are accepted at the General Assembly level, we simply don't know what the, uh, numbers are yet, and those will develop as the session goes on. And then the second reason is because, over the last few years, the General Assembly has grown fond of what's called an omnibus bill, which are big honking pieces of legislation that cover everything under the sun, not just the thing that the bill is ostensibly about. One notable recent example was SB 383, I think that was the number, the one that a couple of you all have alluded to, which was ostensibly a disaster relief bill, but stripped away some of our zoning authority and shifted some of the governor's powers over to the General Assembly. We wouldn't want to oppose that whole bill because it had some good things in it. And so, that's why I think it's important to say what our themes are rather than cite specific pieces of legislation. The other thing I want to draw your attention to about the proposed list, and this is an outcome of the advice that we received from the league, is that it is shorter than our list from last time. Again, this was intentional. Uh, it's an acknowledgement of the changing political environment. They are tightening the purse strings in Raleigh. ARPA is over, the disaster, and all the relief needs are going to put pressure both on the state's surplus and on its regular revenue sources, and there's going to be shifting queues from Washington. All that's to say, it's probably not a great idea to submit a long wish list anymore because they're not all going to be granted. So, this list, as I said, is much shorter. It focuses on themes. It does have one specific funding request, and that's to reiterate our big funding request for wastewater treatment plant funding. And then, two of the three themes that it focuses on are repeats of themes that we've named before, housing and local control over zoning. And then the third theme, the newest one, is storm recovery, which I hope we all agree on. Each theme has a few specific actions that, if they were to come up in a bill, we'd ask our legislators to support, or, if they're willing, introduce bills that include some of these actions. For housing and zoning, the actions are the same as last year. Things like tweaking the Lytec formula for housing, for zoning, playing defense and protecting local authority over zoning decisions. And the new theme, recovery memorializes some of the things that we've talked about around this dais already, such as grant funding for storm victims rather than loans, fronting the hazard mitigation program with state dollars so that it can be put into effect quicker and get reimbursed by the feds at a later date, and giving us explicit permission to flexibly apply our local regulations, something that we've already done at risk. We hope that they will explicitly say we are allowed to do that. I have the old list from two years ago, if you all are interested in what it had to say and how this year's list is different. But if not, I'd ask you to endorse the list as presented, although I know Mr. Baker's going to inquire about possibly adding another theme, but, um, once approved, we will submit this list to, um, Senator Corbin and Representative Clampett, and we'll share this with the league and some of our other partners like the county so that they'll know what we're up to and can advise us if they hear something, uh, about one of these possibilities that we might need to know. And that, those are my comments for now, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manager. Do I have a motion regarding the resolution for the City of Brevard's priorities, legislative priorities?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. To approve, right?
Right.
That's great, oh yeah.
It's well done.
All right, well, open for comments. Mr. Morrow?
Well done.
Ms. Holder?
No comment, no more questions.
Mr. Wise?
I'm all a titter about what Councilman Baker once said.
Oh, you just wait.
I have literally bated breath. But, if we can just wait a moment before we get there, what, did we see from two years ago, did we, did we see movement on these requests? I, I know we didn't see movement on local control of planning and zoning.
No.
I mean, we saw movement, perhaps in the wrong
Wrong direction.
I was just, I'm just kind of wondering as a metric, um, housing, um, is the only one of this list that hasn't moved because the other ones are fairly, like, the storm recovery is new, and planning and zoning went backwards, but I'm just wondering about the, what's, what's the effect of this?
So, we got the $13 million earmark.
Right.
So, that was a win, a big one. And then, some of the things that, uh, were going against us, their negative effect was mitigated somewhat by the, um, requests we made to our legislators. For example, there was a bill two years ago that would have capped the rate we could charge to out-of-town utility customers at 1.25%. 125% of what the in-town rate is. We charge 150%. And because of the feedback from us and because of the feedback from other cities across the state who were going to be affected by that, they, um, grandfathered in all the existing customers. We can keep charging them 150% and only new out-of-town customers can be subject to the 125% rate. So, although in the end, we didn't get all that we wanted, we didn't lose as bad as we could have because of the advocacy of this agenda and, uh, the support of the league.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Daniel?
I have no comments.
Mr. Baker?
Yeah, I would, I would suggest that we need to add another theme, and I apologize that I didn't really have time to communicate about this ahead of time, but, you know, the Thursday to Monday timeframe doesn't give you a whole lot of time to get stuff together, but the theme would be, uh, transportation, and my particular request, the bullet point I would want to put under that is, I think I've spoken about this before, but, um, a lot of people don't realize that the State of North Carolina actually has a law on the books since 2013 that bans the state from using state funds on standalone active mobility projects. And the city attorney will, will know that, the, the, the language used in the, in the law is actually "shall not." So, that's some of the strongest language you can have. So, the Department of Transportation in North Carolina cannot spend their money on things like fixing the gaps in sidewalks along a state road, or, um, you know, if there's a pedestrian crossing that needs to be improved, the state cannot spend money on that unless there's a much larger, uh, project that improves things for motor vehicles. But that's not a very efficient, uh, use of, uh, state funding, and, uh, we have a lot of needs in our own city for, uh, the use of state funds to improve, um, transportation for things other than motor vehicles. So, there was actually an effort, um, last year to repeal this law. It made it a lot of the way through the arduous process of state lawmaking. At the very last minute, it was pulled out of a bill, um, for, I'm sure, various reasons. But, um, there are a lot of cities that are, that are asking the state legislature to reconsider this, and given our, you know, how our city is positioned with so many state roads that, um, impact us directly, and a lot of state projects coming up soon, uh, I think it would be good if we included that and some specific language about what is called the Strategic Transportation Investment Law, if you want to look it up. And I'm sure that staff could probably come up with some other transportation-related bullet points that we might include, um, on this list.
Well, I've got two of them, if y'all are willing to consider.
Great.
You want, you want to hear?
Yes.
Transportation, permit state funds to be, uh, let's see, how exactly is it worded? Support, Brevard requests support for legislation that permits state funds to be used for standalone bicycle pedestrian projects and protects Powell bill allocations. And the reason why I say that is because, for years and years, the General Assembly has grappled with the, uh, figuring out how to pay for statewide transportation needs with a dwindling existing revenue source, which is the gas tax. And as vehicles get more fuel-efficient, and use less gasoline, and our transportation needs grow, well, you can see how that, um, leads to a suboptimal outcome, and so they've been, uh, talk, talking for years about, uh, what they could replace the gas tax with and so on and so forth. And I'm afraid that as that, uh, uh, discussion takes shape, that if there's something that's going to be on the chopping block, it's going to be, uh, the state's allocations to localities for street maintenance, the Powell bill. I think that'll be the first thing to go, um, and they'll want to take that money and spend it on statewide needs, and so, I think it's important to play defense on that one and emphasize our, um, support of Powell bill and, uh, make sure they know that we hope that that's protected in the years to come.
Okay, do we?
I just want to respond to that, and, and, and maybe I, I don't know the bill you're talking about, Aaron, but we've got, uh, I think about eight projects that are pedestrian projects that are in the STIP that's supposed to be approved this month, for the next, so what's?
It's, it's state funds, so
Are they using federal funds?
They're probably using, they have to be using federal funds because under state law, if it's state funds, it can't, and it's a standalone pedestrian or bicycle project, they can't use state funds. So, you know, and the Acousta Trail is a great example where that's a federal, federally funded project, and the DOT is, is, um, you know, executing on it, but it's not state money, it's, it's federal funds. So, a lot of times, I think the DOT is practical and they try to move things around and try to get things funded federally
But they put $7 million to buy Acousta Trail?
From, yeah, I don't, I don't, I mean, I
Yeah. So, I don't know, I don't, I just like to know more about how that's supposed to work.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a well-documented law on the books that, you know, places like Winston-Salem and, um, some of the bigger municipalities have tried to get changed.
I, I just need to get educated on that specific
Yeah, and I can
Very fortunate with what, you know, NC DOT has done for us.
Yeah, yeah, and I think, I mean, to their credit, I think the, the workers at NC DOT are very creative with shifting the source of funds so that they can still get stuff done.
Right.
But, uh, you know, sometimes the pieces don't fit, and it would be nice if they had the flexibility to spend state monies on improving transportation for things
But we wouldn't have never gotten this, the Acousta Trail if the state hadn't come up with $7 million bucks.
Right, right.
So, so, so Mac, I, don't hold me to this because I'd have to go back and research it. But I think that the award that Henderson County got, what you're talking about, was awarded so long ago that the law has changed into what Aaron has shared since then. I mean, I think they got those funds, you know, 10 or 12 years ago, and this change has been on the books Yeah, for, you know, seven or eight years. And honestly, I think it was that kind of thing that kind of triggered, triggered it. The folks that were in the General Assembly at the time didn't like the fact that awards had been made for pedestrian-only projects.
Well, that was Chuck Brady.
Yeah. He was a good advocate, but, you know, he's, he's but one vote on the Board of Transportation.
Okay, so we have a proposal to add another item. Does, who made the motion? Did you, Mac? Do you want to amend your motion to include the two, uh, items that the manager mentioned? Who made the second? Okay, are you amending your second? Okay, so we now have an amended motion and second to approve the list with the addition of the transportation items that the manager listed. Any additional comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. All right, moving on to our final item of new business, the Amendment to the 2025 City Council Meeting Schedule, Reschedule the Budget Workshop and the April Regular Meeting. I believe Madam Clerk is going to present this to us.
Yes. At your last meeting on December 2nd, you approved the, um, meeting schedule, which included regular meetings, a priority-setting retreat in March, and a budget workshop, uh, scheduled for April 17th. And after that meeting, it was brought to our attention that the April 17th, uh, Budget Workshop would have fallen in the week that the Transylvania County Schools take their spring break. So, um, we had a request to consider rescheduling the budget, budget workshop to either a week before or a week later. And in looking at our calendar with the city manager, um, trying to work the budget, we are proposing to reschedule the Budget Workshop to Friday, April 11th. And ordinarily, we would have perhaps canceled a meeting that, a regular meeting that would be scheduled for Monday, April 7th. However, um, it's planned for DFI to make a presentation at that meeting regarding the Azilia Avenue property. So, we do need to keep that date. And, uh, in order to, keep everything on track, we are looking to add another regular meeting for Monday, April 21st. So, the, the change would be to reschedule the Budget Workshop to Friday, April 11th, and add one regular meeting on Monday, April 21st.
Do I have a motion to approve the amended meeting schedule?
So moved.
Comments, Mr. Baker?
My 12-year-old son, Henry, thanks you. My 12-year-old son, Henry, thanks you that we might go on a spring break trip. Thanks.
Mr. Daniel?
I have no comment.
Mr. Morrow?
Good.
Ms. Holder?
Is the budget meeting 8:30 all day?
Probably till about 4:00, 4:30 or so, yes, ma'am.
And as well as the priority-setting retreat?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Mr. Wise?
No comment. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The new schedule is approved. All right, and that is the end of new business, and we are on remarks and future agenda considerations. And we will start off with Mr. Morrow.
Oh, thanks. I appreciate in the, in our agenda packet, and a shout-out to Dean and Tina. When I looked at your November tax settlement report, we just hit 72 percent of the projected taxes, property taxes have been received, and which, that was not true a few years ago until the city decided, and Rodney will remember this, but the city basically decided to collect its own taxes. And how many years has that been going on now, Dean, do you know?
Since I've been here, I think that was three, four years, maybe.
That's right, and so, this is not more than five or six, do you remember, Gary?
No, I don't.
But, but it's been a great thing, and it's, it's a shout-out to, to that decision that so many years ago, or four, five years ago, whatever, that, here it is in the beginning of the first quarter, that you've got 72 percent of your projection in property taxes, so. And if I remember, for the, it cost us about $60,000 or so upfront costs of the computer, something like that?
Yeah, then a lot of the reason we have that is the 2% discount.
Correct, and, well, we, we didn't get an incentive before. So, that incentive, I think, helped, was a good idea, and, and I assume y'all are still in favor of that.
I think so, yeah.
You know what I mean, 'cause you, we didn't have to wait until March to get any money from those folks up the street, 'cause that's usually when we got our first check, was, you know, six months into the thing, thing, so, anyway, so, I just, that's just down memory lane. Thanks for the report.
Mr. Daniel?
Yeah, a couple of things, questions. One is, have we heard anything back from Davison River Presbyterian after our proposals that we were made at, I guess, a meeting a couple, a month ago?
Yes, sir, I, I talked to Keith right before the holidays, and he said they were interested in keeping the conversation going, and so, we're gonna convene our team and the ad hoc group, we haven't set a date yet, but probably in the weeks to come, and, and talk about how we keep something alive on that property and how we can help them, well, I don't know exactly what we're gonna talk about, but there's interest in keeping the partnership and the conversation going.
And I have another request, is when we had our discussion and voted on the changes to the emergency response about who would, how that would be called, you know, we made two or three changes in that, and I would like personally to have that come back to us, what the wording was that was placed in the ordinance, so that we know exactly what was, what we enacted.
Yes, sir.
I mean, and then, the last thing, and this is something that's been on my mind for a while, and it's on the Acousta, Estito Trail, our bike trail, we need to put up some regulations on that. We need to figure out what those regulations are gonna be. I use that a lot, either biking or walking, and there's gonna, somebody's gonna get hurt on that trail. Cyclists need to notify pedestrians as, as they're coming up behind them. You can't hear them, and, and I know I've been on both sides of that, so I always try to alert someone that I'm passing, but, so, if I'm walking my dog, who is not the best-trained dog on the path, and she darts across the trail, somebody's coming along, there could be serious injuries. And there are serious injuries from pedestrians and cyclists colliding as well, so I would encourage us to think about going ahead and start formulating what, and this would apply to the Acousta Trail as well, I'm sure, but I would like for us to start thinking about that and go ahead and, and start getting people informed of what they need to know to use the trail.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have.
Ms. Holder?
Thank you. I just have one thing, the Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration or commemoration will be at Bethel A. on March, March, January 20th, and we'll convene at the courthouse at 4:00 and leave there at 4:30 to march over to Bethel A., and we'll have hot chocolate and coffee and cookies until 5:30, 5:45, and at that time, we'll go right into the sanctuary for the commemoration. And we're gonna use people from the community to give different parts of one of his speeches, his Martin Luther King, "I Have a Dream" speech is not the only one, so you'll have to come and find out which one we'll focus on. But I'm looking forward to involving the community in this. If you would like to sing on the choir, let us know, or if you would like to participate in some way, our mayor has agreed to participate as well, but Bethel A. on the 20th of January at 6:00, 5:30 for hot chocolate.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Let's see, who, who have I missed? Mr. Wise?
First of all, Happy New Year to everyone. Can't believe we're on the other side of 24. I wanna say two things. One, I really appreciate the discussion we had tonight, so thank you for everyone for being open and willing to talk about this stuff. I think it's really important, even though it can be challenging sometimes. Two, I love that people are using our walkways and bike paths. Please don't drive on them, if you can avoid it, because they're not really meant for that. I don't know if you saw that someone took their truck down a boardwalk this weekend.
Is it like here from New York?
Yeah. It's a wild and crazy town on the New Year here, and that's, that's all I got.
Mr. Baker?
Yeah, on that particular note, I wanted to thank Wesley and the Public Works staff for working insanely fast to get that back up and running. That is, you know, that boardwalk being shut down, that's a really important link for a lot of people that are commuting for work or getting around, and, and it's really the only safe way, if you're on, on foot or bike, to cross town. And so, it being shut down is, is a big deal for a lot of people, and I, you know, as soon as I saw the picture of that truck tilted over on the boardwalk, I was like, oh, Lord, we're gonna, that's gonna be closed for weeks, I thought, and, and it was, what, 24 hours later that we got the message it was back up and running, so that's a huge testament to, to our Public Works staff and, and how quickly they can mobilize, and so, thank you for that. Just a couple of other things I wanted to mention, that we had a strategic planning session scheduled for the Acousta Trail that was among, obviously, many other important things delayed by the hurricane, and just wondered, you know, whether we would include that as a part of the other strategic planning session. Seems like we've got a lot to talk about already for that, but I do think it's still really important for this council and for the city as a whole to, to think strategically about the Acousta Trail as we go forward, you know? Take the, take the trail part out of it and just look at the amount of money that's being invested in that, you know, hundreds, $100 million, you know, linking our community with, with Hendersonville. We would wanna think strategically about how that money is gonna impact the city and, and how we could make the most of it. So, I think a session like that is, is really important, and hopefully, we can have that pretty soon. And that's all.
Ms. Holder, you have another?
Yes, I wanna add to the Martin Luther King Celebration weekend. On Saturday, January 18th, there will be a unity dinner at the Mary C. Jenkins Community Center, starting at 5:00, and tickets are limited, so please see Tyree and Griffin to get added to the list, and I can add my name now, and, and so, we look forward to seeing you there. The next day is my birthday, so you can come to the church at 10:45, and then meet us at Bethel A. again Sunday, I mean, Monday, whole weekend.
All right, Mr. Attorney?
We have 63 close, no. Nothing, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
I'm just glad that the city attorney was joking.
I am too.
Mr. Manager?
I also wanna thank our Public Works staff for their quick response, both to the boardwalk incident, but also to the vandalism at the depot bathrooms, which they are still repairing, but that we hope to get back in service soon, and in particular, Cliff, Tanner, Trey, Adam, and Zach, thank you guys.
Okay, just a couple of things. Yes, Public Works, you guys are heroes, getting things fixed so quickly, and you're, you guys are just always there, and it's, it's incredible, so thank you very much. And I will just say, it is very disappointing that we had vandalism at our facilities the way we did, and, you know, we're gonna get them back and affix it as much as, you know, as quickly as possible, but it comes down to individual responsibility, folks, you know? And I know the police are working on who was responsible, so we'll look forward to hearing more about that. I also want to definitely thank our age-friendly task force. I wanna thank our two council members, Councilman Wise and Councilwoman Holder, for being on that task force for the last, well, year almost, almost a year we've been, been working. And I wanna thank Dr. Paula Hartmanstein. We are so fortunate to have an expert in this field who has donated so much of her time to this program. We are getting known nationally for this. We have been a member for one year, we have already gotten national recognition, and that is thanks to the incredible team and the incredible leadership of Dr. Hartmanstein. So, thank you so much, and I'm so excited that we've got the plan accepted, and we'll be reconvening soon to start moving out on, on actually working on a lot of the items in there. We have a number of other things coming up besides Martin Luther King celebration. On February 2nd, we have our White Squirrel Day. You might know it as Groundhog Day the rest of the world, but in Brevard, we celebrate it as White Squirrel Day, and we will be celebrating at the Mary C. Jenkins with our new White Squirrel Ambassador, who will be introduced that day. So, come and meet our new White Squirrel. The first meet the mayor of the New Year is this Thursday at 11:30 at the Mary C. Jenkins Community Center, so come on down and join me. And finally, just a reminder that it is winter, it is gonna be cold, and they have declared, declared code purple this week, today through the 12th, so the cove is gonna be open as a shelter for people that need shelter, and there will be transportation, the Haven is actually gonna be providing transportation each day, 4:30 in the afternoon from Walmart, 4:45 Ingalls, and at 5:00 PM from the library to help transport people that might need the shelter. So, again, keep in mind those people that are less fortunate that might need some help or assistance getting out there because it is gonna be cold and conditions might be, be very rough for some people. And with that, welcome to 2025. I think we are all looking forward to a really great, busy, and productive year as we, the city and our community, continue to move forward in all of these areas that we've talked about this evening and through the past year. So, thank you very much. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Good job, y'all.